We'll call a meeting to order and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, call the roll, please. Connor?
Here.
Gary?
Here.
McMillan?
Here.
Reed?
Here.
Mayor Beattie? Here. Are there any changes to the agenda?
I don't have any there. We will need a session to connect the flag department.
Okay, we'll open up for public comment. If you have comments for council, please come to the podium, state your name. And you have a three-minute time limit. Seeing none, we will move on to new business. Item one, Resolution 2024-35, authorizing and approving an IDOT highway permit for temporary closure of a portion of Westbound Illinois Route 18 and Main Street in the North Lane upward street and reduction of two lanes of Northbound Route Illinois Park Street to one lane for through traffic in the city of Streeter and in conjunction with cruise night. Make it a motion and second.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Dave Reed with the motion, Tim Gary with the second. Any discussion? Say that we do this every year.
Yeah, it was the same course as previous years.
Are we closing the rows at four or five? The cover letter says four, the other thing says five.
I believe it's, we start setting up at four. So that they can start the crews at five.
Any other comments or questions? Clerk, call the roll, please. Connor?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
McMillan?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Mayor Beattie?
Aye.
Item two, Ordinance 2024-24, amending section 1024-200 of the municipal code of ordinances of the city of Streeter, LaSalle, Livingston counties, Illinois by installing two stop signs at the intersection of Joyce Street and Bilter Street on the east and west sides. Make it a motion and second.
Still moved.
Second.
Okay, Dave Connor with the motion and Matt McMillan with the second. This was a request from someone in the neighborhood that was concerned about kids leaving North Lawn, and there's no sign there. Any other questions on this one? Okay, Clerk, call the roll. Connor?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
McMillan?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Mayor Beattie?
Aye. Item three, Resolution 2024-36, to enter into an agreement for administration and coordination services for a community development block grant program housing rehabilitation on behalf of the city of Streeter. Make it a motion and second.
Still moved.
Second.
Dave Connor with the motion and Matt McMillan with the second. And any discussion? This one, this was for, I believe, NCICG for our housing rehab grants. They've worked on the first round, and so this will be to agree for the second round.
Okay, so this is this is just the $35,000 hour, this is for them to run?
Yes.
oversee it?
To oversee all of the rehab grants.
Okay.
Yes.
The hiring inspectors.
Yeah, they hire all the contractors, inspectors, and so this is their administrative fee.
We're not to the sweat process, I'll ask them.
No, not yet. No, this is kind of the next step to get there.
Alright.
Okay. Any other discussion? Clerk, call the roll, please. Connor?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
McMillan?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Mayor Beattie?
Aye. Item four, Resolution 2024-37, awarding a construction contract to Vissering Construction Company, Streeter, Illinois, for the city of Streeter's 2024 wastewater treatment plant oxidation ditch and plant maintenance project. Make it a motion and second.
Still moved.
Second.
Okay, Tim Gary with the motion and Dave Reed with the second. So this might have some more discussion.
We've now discussed this issue over the past couple of meetings. One new piece of information that was being known to us over the last couple of weeks since last meeting, that was the grant proceeds can be used to purchase the equipment.
Right?
Yeah, so by doing so, we commit to doing it all, and if not, we will have to refund that money if we miss the
Right.
Yeah.
So, we could order the equipment and use the grant. The equipment is about 1.4 million, the grant's about 1.2. And so we'd largely fund that, and then we can go seek the loan out for the remaining cost other than that $200,000 that we may have spent prior to the loan. And do the project, we probably won't have any issues with timing because the equipment will take
That's the only EPA, sorry.
If we don't get the EPA loan, then we can either spend our reserves or find another loan. Convention loan.
What was the interest rate on the EPA loan?
Well, uh
Two, two and a half?
Yeah, it changes
It's 18, 18.5 now.
Oh, it was 18, it was 18.1 last year. And there's also the opportunity for loan forgiveness. Communities like us often experience one, they're going to get this.
Can I ask a quick question? It's a little unusual. Another community I represent, Village of Dalzell, they're going to do a project connecting a water system to Peru. And our recent village meeting, the village engineer mentioned that the loan forgiveness program would, it looked like it would be going up for next year. For the Village of Dalzell, we were anticipating 50%, and that it might go to 80%. Have you heard anything?
I haven't heard any of that.
It's based on, of course, income levels, but our, it's a double or sort, our poverty level has gone down a little by the last census, so if those went up, that might be when it comes in, but
It's also a much smaller community, but I wasn't sure if there were other stepping points for a community such as Streeter, so I just wanted to ask.
But it won't be guaranteed. You know, we have to make the assumption we'll take the loan out if there won't be any forgiveness, but the likelihood is that there will be. But I don't want to you know, this guy, Council.
Where I'm leaning to right now, because I think some of the larger well, we know that the equipment went up in the two years significantly. So I'm kind of at the point where I feel like we split the, we buy the equipment, that we were not worried about that increasing, and then apply for the grant or the EPA loan in the spring, and then rebid in the spring. If we have to use reserves at that point, we can, but I guess that's, that's my opinion.
That's exactly what I was going to say. I, I don't think it would be prudent to use our reserves and then put our future projects on hold. Because that's one of the things we would have to do if we use our reserves. I think it would be fiscally responsible, I think, to go for the loan. You know, we're talking $2 million or so of our own money. And you leave that invested, making five, six percent. When we could borrow the money at 1.85, why would we spend our own when we give up 5% interest when we take the loan out at 1.85? I think, you know, our two big responsibilities as elected officials, first and foremost is always public safety. And the second one is to be responsible and good stewards of the taxpayers' money. And I think if we can borrow 1.85 instead of cashing in our own that's making 5%, I think that's the prudent thing to do.
It's only earning that 5% for a year. The rates, the rates are trending down.
Trending.
So it's 20 years ago, we're not going to stay at that 5% to make it down to a lot less.
Well, we're only talking several years.
I like the idea of buying the equipment now. At least have it in hand.
Because that's, that's one of the wild cards, is how much is the equipment going to go up?
Is that what, the cost? It was added, and labor.
Added, yeah.
They both, they both
And both are going to go up again.
Yeah.
They're not I don't know, I think it's risky to push out another new bidding process. Because anything we might save in investments we're going to maybe just spend on the project instead. If we're only getting 5% of $1 million is a number I can't go with right now, but yeah, I can see the project going up a hundred grand or 200 grand just as easily.
But there's a good possibility up to a third of that could be forgiven by the EPA.
It could.
That's
I mean, that's
That's huge.
I see that, just throwing the dice, though, not saying it won't happen, but I don't know, I'd still rather it was paid and be done. I know, just talking to Dave earlier, a lot of the issues that he had coming into the job was earlier loans and future borrowing, and I just hate to see us doing it again over something. Something like this, that really just came out of a grant. Not that we don't need it, but
So if we just wanted to buy the equipment, we would want to vote no on this, and then we would be rebidding their share?
That's correct.
And then next month or next meeting, we would have to have an order? An ordinance then or something, a resolution to purchase the equipment?
Well, actually, I did hear, I heard from them about an hour ago, and they'd like to have the order, if you're going to do that, then have like the order in July. And then, the, the equipment manufacturer, so I mean, I don't know if that's a special meeting.
We had to call a special meeting.
Special meeting, so I mean, that's, yeah.
Pretty, pretty
So then we're voting no?
If you want to turn this bid down and try to rebid next year, vote no.
And buy the equipment now?
And buy the equipment, that would be
A special meeting. We have to have a special meeting to buy the equipment, not long for that.
Now, I said I'll get the, an actual proposal from the equipment manufacturer that you guys can review and
Alright. We still have time also. Well, rejecting this bid, we're done with bid processing, right?
Yes, we're going to have to rebid. The, this week's bid will be thrown out, and we will look for a new bid in the spring or next year. And when does this have to be done? What was the hard date? July of 2026.
No, no, for the, for the, excepting the bids.
No, the project?
August.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Was it August? Is that July or August of 20, it's 2026. That's the issue we're into, is if this isn't done in time.
This bid, I thought, was only good till August 9th or something?
It is, I doubt it. He was asking when the project from the federal grant had to be done, and that's July of 2026, but we have until August 9th, I believe, to, that's the 90 days on the bid. Okay.
Could we table this? Until we have the special meeting, and then decide if we want to do the equipment or do the bid?
Well, we're running up against the 90 days, but
It is August 9th.
Okay, so we could do both of it. You could table this then and do both at the same meeting?
Reject the bid and buy the equipment, or go the other way?
Uh, for the equipment, we're going to have to wait
Yeah, I'd get the official
Yeah, you have to wait for bidding.
So you'll need four votes to buy the
You'll need four votes to buy the equipment.
Because we'll be waiting for bidding on that part. You can't use the, the bidding that Vissering provided for the equipment to buy the equipment.
Now, when you say buy the equipment, are we the new proud owners of this equipment, or is this
Well, it needs to be manufactured, you know, take months.
Oh, no, I'm asking, when the project's done, can we still own this equipment?
Yeah, yeah, that's the whole point, is to buy the equipment and then just hire the labor to install it. In fact, we were talking in-house about using our own personnel, maybe hiring a person or two to try to install, but we don't think that that's complicating.
Those guys have no skill to put that kind of
Well, we talked about it, we decided not to pursue it.
Alright, let's table this then.
I'll make that motion. We tabled this.
Well, we have to we're going to do a check.
Yeah, we have a motion on the floor.
So there's a motion on the floor, and what you don't want to do is you don't want to vote on the pending motion, so
We can reschedule.
Draw my motion.
I, I think you can just make a motion to table, and Mr. Gary made the motion to abort the contract, so Mr. Gary, will you make a motion to table this matter?
Can I make the motion?
And Mr. Reed, you make the second, you second.
Yes.
Bob's rules. I think we're close enough.
Ten minutes to get nothing done.
We got, you made a
Tell government what works.
So five, four, we're tabled. Do we need to vote on table?
Yeah, we need to vote on motion to table, so that is, so Council, it's clear, you're voting on a motion to table this decision.
Okay, Clerk, call the roll, please. Connor?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
McMillan?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Mayor Beattie?
Aye. Item five is a motion to receive and place on file plan commission recommendations from their July 9th, 2024 meeting. Which are recommendation 2024-07, a special use permit to Steve of Brenda Lawless, 511 James Street, for the construction of a new residential garage only. Recommendation 2024-08, recommending approval and granting of facade grants to property owner, Robert and Jody Ogle, 121 East Main Street. And plan commission recommendation 2024-09, recommending approval and granting of facade grants to property owner, Robert and Jody Ogle, 106 South Park Street. Make it a motion and second.
Still moved.
Second.
Dave Reed with the motion and Tim Gary with the second. Any discussion? These are just to receive and place on file. Alright, Clerk, call the roll, please. Connor?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
McMillan?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Mayor Beattie?
Aye. Item six, Resolution 2024-38, approval and granting an award of a facade grant to property owner Jason Francis, 1109 North Bloomington Street, Streeter, Illinois, in the amount of $30,000. Make it a motion and second.
Still moved.
Second.
Okay, Dave Connor with the motion and Tim Gary with the second. And discussion?
Lady Mayor Trump, so the next two, six and seven, are, previously they were approved in, I believe, January, February by the Plan Commission. And received a place on file at that time, but no action was taken because they're outside of downtown, and that's the program. So my memo on these two plus number nine, the two for the Ogles who are here tonight, basically, you see in there that right now, we have, we were lucky enough, we didn't get $25,000 in LaSalle County Aqua Funds for the facade program. So the issue that you're going to have to look at budgetarily is you have enough money for the two grants to Vent-a-Vet, which is what you're looking at here, 30 grand, as well as Curly's Furniture, which is 45. The two for Blue-Eyed Rascal, number nine, you're only going to have 15,000, and they requested, I'm sorry, only 10. When you add all that money, if you award the two for Coca-Cola, the Vent-a-Vet, and Curly's, you have 10 grand left in budget. And you have a 30 grand request. So it's a decision of, you know, do you want to up the budget, do you want to, that's going to be a question more for Dave, but or the Ogles are here, do we talk to them about doing less and only awarding the 10, staying within budget, or how do you want to handle it? You have, the Plan Commission has recommended the grants for 1109, 1726, and 121 East Main, and 106. So they think that they're the good projects for the downtown and still in the business district, but budgetarily, that's a question.
Do we have to do we have to do the 1109 North Bloomington, the 1726 North Bloomington before the 121 East Main, because they've been approved?
No, so that's
They haven't been approved.
They, they, they're just, yeah, they're all, it's July, or after July 1st, so they're all at your guys' discretion and award these grants now.
I mean, you know, your first thought is, you know, they sent these in in January and February. You know, the Vent-a-Vet and Curly's.
The pitcher, she sits here, so I didn't mention that, I'm sorry, Toby. But, yeah, so Vent-a-Vet, if you have any questions, I heard she is here, so
Yeah.
The contractor, can I come up and speak or?
Sure.
Okay. We've had the property for like 23 years, and we have future plans for the front of the facade. One being, we are going to, you know, retire into roasting coffee and have a little coffee shop in the front. But bring in the face of it to look like it used to back in 1906, when E.J. Walton founded it. And we have a lot of little memorabilia that we will place in there, and it's a very fond building to the community. A lot of people have childhood memories there, getting Coca-Colas when they received As on the report card. So we kind of feel like it's kind of important to, when you're coming into Streeter, to make it look really, you know, cute and good. So we kind of have a, the reason the January question, sir, that you brought up, was we weren't able to get on the schedule with the contractor that we wanted to work with because removing that rock wall that was put on in the 70s is not going to be an easy feat. And then we also want to, you know, clean up the, the front door entryways and the side door entryway and get, you know, the fence cleaned up nicely. Make, just make the whole front, the two sides look really good and approachable, and hopefully bring some I have a possibility maybe even for an antique store to even go in there. He's been talking to me, to United States, possibly in the future, but that would be on us to get the interior level, you know. But we're not buying any more Corvettes per se, there's a lot of Corvettes in there, but it's all going to be housed in the big portion, and the big idea was to make it look like two buildings. Make the, we're going to repaint the emblems on both sides. I have a newspaper article from, from when they closed it. I found out that was the last independently owned Coca-Cola factory, independently owned in the country before it was all sold back to corporate. So it has its own little, last of the, you know, hanging in there, you know, independently owned history behind it. And it was owned by a woman for, for 50, 60 years ran that, built that property, which is kind of amazing as well. But, so there's two candy, red and white striped awnings, and we were trying to hope to replace the three windows, the two doors, and put the two awnings. I don't know if you guys have a chance to look at this old picture. But, you know, we feel like that, you know, that little corner office, there could be a little fresh roasted coffee that people, I already built, we already have a route, we're already building our clientele, you know, as well. And then we have an opportunity possibly for the antique store to, to rent some space there as well in the future, so there's ideas for the future for the building, because it's solid, it's a solid building.
Yeah, and that was my question. This is more cosmetic?
It is.
You would say, and I know the 121 is having some, some brick problems, some separation, that's more you know, a structural issue, so kind of got away
We have to get a roof eventually too. Unfortunately, the property won't appraise for any more than it has appraised 20 years ago, which I'm kind of sad about, but I thought that because we wanted to get the money. It's expensive to put a rubber roof on there. We've already replaced the rubber roof once, and it was over $50,000, and that came out of our own pockets. But we need it again. Maybe the guy didn't do it, it's a good side on that one side, but we understand that in order for us to be able to get that money, that we have to try to increase the value of the property as well. To help us, because it can become a structural problem for us as well. What hasn't been disclosed that much as far as, but we feel like cleaning it up, making it look good, increasing its value by putting some little coffee shop or maybe an antique store will help increase its value as well, based on, you know, generating actually income. So not being used as a warehouse, which it has been for the last 20 years. It serves us really well. We're very grateful to have the building. And we don't want to let it go, of course, but, yeah. Things are different now. Again, that's what I wanted to share with you guys. We have five exterior doors and hardware, we wanted to resemble the originals. We have the right guy on the job, he's a specialist in historical homes and historical buildings, and he can do pretty much anything. There's 17 exterior commercial windows, tearing out the fence and, you know, also the tug, you know, the, that front canopy that's kind of falling down. But we need to get rid of that, you know, just make it look a little better, and then one question I did have too, and it was brought up today, was about the tool. There wouldn't be one tool possibly that we'd need to help get that, it's an aggregate tool, to help get that rock veneer off, so that we can restore. The tuck point is not an issue, none of that is, but you know, we need some diamond blades and sawzaws and possibly some, you know, jet sponge type, you know. It'll be a project for this guy. Just, just the, given the rock wall, we may have to revisit what we end up with as a, you know, depending on the cost. Because it may not make any sense to put that much money in tearing down the rock, you know, we have to see if we can get it to make sense, of course, so but there's a lot that we can do that will make sense, that'll make it look good. I don't know what else there is to say other than we are ready, the guy's ready, the guy that we want to help, you know, get this going. And now we can, we can start moving forward with it. I was very excited to find out that it was a possibility, so but thank you for considering.
Thank you.
Yes.
Dave, how hard?
Oh, did you have a question? Sorry.
No, I'm talking to Mr. Plankman. How hard would it be to find $20,000 in our budget to be able to do all of these projects?
Would it be 20 or 10? 20.
We have 20.
10 left, and then 20 would get the last one.
20 would get all of these done.
Well, that's next month, we'll do a mid-year financial review, and I'll have a better sense of exactly where we're at, but over the past couple of years, we have set money inside, and our general fund balance is healthy at around 40%. And so I don't think, even though it may cause us to be in a deficit for the current year, we had, we haven't had a deficit in a couple of years. I think we're financially sound, so I'm not concerned about falling off the cliff if we spent $20,000, more than what we anticipated for the facade grant program. This is the most important economic development tool that the city is using
Exactly.
for the small property owner.
Small business owners.
This is not the multi-hundred thousand dollar contribution for North Oyster Theater projects or other large projects. And so, you know, it allows for the redevelopment of these small properties. This one is also located in the downtown pit, it's not in the central business area, but it is in the downtown pit district.
And every dollar we invest in economic development is supposed to bring $3 back over time.
Yeah.
So I don't ever want to say no.
I think it's a stud, it's a matter, and this building definitely needs helping, I think, in that regard. And I think it would be cool if they had a coffee shop and an antique store, like, that would be a good thing.
So we've awarded four projects for a total of five grand, 75,000. Are any of those I guess not going to be completed until next year, or do you think they'll all be done?
Uh, 114 North Monroe is done, so that
They're going to do price check.
Yeah, and the other, the other ones, yes, I believe they are. Senko, the bricks are there. I saw the patterns the other day, they're moving ahead, so is the 50 yard line, so we might
Sometimes we have them where they're hit next year, like, in the shovel budget.
I think you're going to have them completed.
So would you be comfortable if we approved these, that we would be able to find the money to, to cover it? Instead of tabling again, I don't like tabling things.
Can we just approve one of them?
You can do, approve, delay. I, the question is, do we have the resources to fund this? And the answer is yes.
Yeah, and that was my question.
It may be resources
Might be in the wrong pocket.
Prior fiscal years, but we're able to pay $20,000.
My priority is, I'd like to see this awarded to 1109 North Bloomington, and then awarded to the 120 Money's Main, the 106 South Park, for the downtown area. And then, we have the money freed up, then give it to 1726 Bloomington.
We have the money to do them all, why wouldn't we just do them all?
I think we need to stick to the budget, because that's
Or we can approve what we got, and then move money into the budget, and then approve the last one?
Yeah, you can always pick up the third one, if we have it. Postpone, or go back.
We're $20,000 short if we only hold off
5,000 over budget.
Yeah, if, if we only hold off 1726, we're still 5,000 off.
Be $60,000, only a 55 remaining.
Again, though, if we approve it, by the time these projects get going and get done, we can alter the budget to cover it. Want me to put that into a motion? Want me to put that into a motion?
I think they're.
We're all sitting here doing nothing.
We already have a motion.
No, we're discussing.
We have a motion on the floor.
And I can just say, I looked up each property's, just their, uh, what they give to the tip each year. And, uh, the White Rascal's still over a thousand, Curly's is over two thousand, and theirs is the eleven oh nine Bloomington is fifty-seven dollars. I would like to see the people who put the most in get it first, just because it's their money that they're getting back. Not that I don't think we should approve either of, I'd like to see at least one go to eleven oh nine North Bloomington, but I think, uh, for what, uh, the other two properties give to the tip district every year, I think it would be. At least better for them to get what's theirs back.
Giving a facade grant raises their assessed value.
Right, I'm just saying, that's, that's what they've been paying up, I mean, Curly's paid twenty-two oh seven last year. That's almost a tenth of the project.
Is that sales tax?
No, that's just what goes with the tax, off the property tax. Not common sense tax, just property tax. I mean, if you're looking for a tiebreaker, that's what I feel like would be a fair tiebreaker.
Well, I just, I guess call, we'll call it one on all three and we'll start with this one and we'll see what.
But it adds up.
What has it, what are, what we end up to, that's where we're, we're at.
So this will be a vote.
Well, what, even what we don't approve tonight, we can approve later once we have our mid-year.
Yeah.
Our mid-year.
Assessment.
So the motion is currently on the floor. It's for eleven oh nine, thirty thousand dollars.
And what is your recommendation, Matt?
I would say just do one of the two for eleven oh nine. If there's more money later in the year, then we can do it, or next year, they can try again, or. I mean, I would, I would agree with approving one of them. I don't like going out of the budget, but I mean, if it's an extra five thousand, do one, one, two, I'm okay with that, I'm comfortable with that. I can say that's not going to vote, how's that sound?
Any other discussions? We're voting for, this is to vote for two, two grants for eleven oh nine. So, call the roll.
Connor?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
McMullin?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Mayor B. D.
Aye.
Pass, we'll go to resolution twenty twenty-four thirty-nine. Approval and granting of facade grant to property owner Daniel Reardon, seventeen twenty-six North Bloomington Street in an amount of fifteen thousand. Get a motion and second.
So, second.
Hey, Matt McMillan with the motion and Dave Reed with the second. Any discussion on this one? Clerk Callarroll, please.
Connor?
No.
Gary?
Aye.
McMillan?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Mayor B. D.
Aye.
And we'll go into item eight, take a break from facade grants for a second, we'll go into item eight. Order is twenty twenty-four twenty-five, approving and awarding a special use permit to petitioner Stephen Brent Delalas. Under the provisions of chapter seventeen, section seventeen, dot four oh oh, dot oh one oh, to allow for the construction of a new residential garage only for property at five eleven James Street. Get a motion and second.
Submove. Second.
Okay, Tim Gary with the motion and Dave Reed with the second. And discussion for this one.
Uh, so this one, again, was a last, uh, last month or last week's language meeting, so, uh, petitioners, I don't see are, uh, uh, they, they own the house across the street from five eleven James. They bought the lot at five eleven James, uh, they'd like to, he has a boat and, uh, his motorcycle, and he'd like to build a garage. Uh, special condition placed by the plan commission for their recommendation was that it be built towards the rear of the lot, uh, off of, uh, James, or off of, uh.
James Street and Milner.
Milner, off of Milner, so it's gonna be set away from Milner, away from James, uh, so that's where it's at, and it will be, I said that it'll be a residential garage with no primary structure, but it'll be spaced, so the primary structure could be built.
And right now, we have an ordinance that doesn't allow for that, correct, to have a house in the garage.
Correct, nice, we've represented to the plan commission as a, what they would like to see a code change to prevent these, and they, they wanted to see them one at a time. So that was their preference, not to come back to and look at a code change, they want to look at them one at a time. I'm not sure how the attorney feels about that, but, uh, that's where it's at.
I drove by there on my way here tonight and, you know, that solution of having it in the corner, not built right in the center of the lot, makes a lot of sense to me, because you can still build a primary structure. I didn't see a problem with having a single structure on there. But I do like doing the case by case like the plan commission does. So, so you have a little control over what you give exceptions to and what you don't.
And just, I guess, just so that, uh, aware, if, so, and this is, this comes into play too, uh, people come in for demolition permit on houses, we're currently required that they tear the garage down too. So that's just so everyone's, like, the code says no garages without a house unless you go through this process, so, um, that's, like, then, I get a lot of calls about it and I tell them, go through this process, and so that's, you might see more.
But another way to skin that, Kat, Jeremy, to, don't we have a short form process for combining lots?
Well, if, I, that, if, if, if it's, if it's, the potential to do it, that's, they don't even come here, I, I, I say, go to the county and they do it, uh, this is across the street. Yeah, so that's the problem, yeah, if it's, if it's in the joint lot, but yeah, just go to the county and pay fifty bucks and, and they move ahead, so.
Okay, any other questions or comments on this one? Clerk Callarroll, please.
Connor?
No.
Gary?
Aye.
McMillan?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Mayor B. D.
Aye.
Okay, item nine, is resolution twenty twenty-four dot forty, approval and granting of a facade, of an award of a facade grant to property owners Robert and Jodi Ogo, one twenty-one East Main Street and one oh six South Park Street, Streeter Illinois, in the amount of thirty thousand dollars. Get a motion and second.
Submove. Second.
Okay, Tim Gary with the motion and Dave Reed with the second. Any discussion here? Do all those want to come forward or not? It's up to you, okay.
If you have some questions, we're happy to.
Okay, any questions for, for them? Clerk Callarroll, please.
Connor?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
McMillan?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Mayor B. D.
Aye.
Okay, item ten, resolution twenty twenty-four forty-one, in support and leverage of the city of Streeter for proposed rebuild downtown and main streets, grant application with the Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic, economic opportunities. Get a motion and second.
Submove. Second.
Uh, Dave Connor and Tim Gary with the second. And for this discussion. This is one I requested us to apply for, for the grant, um, because I know we've been having issues with the flickering downtown street lights. And there's also, um, power cords for light-up Streeter that are in the tree pits and they get worn and cause shorts and, um, we had already had some quoting to do the electrical work down there. But if we can get grant money to help pay for that, I would like to do so, so that's, I guess, my first, first discussion while you take over.
Well, the only thing, man, so would be rewiring all the relights that we put in, supplementing, uh, getting the tree grates that have integrated the outlets, everything wired properly. Uh, we've also since, we have proximity to the city park in downtown, added some underground outlet boxes for like special events, like the bootstraps, that's, they're less likely to enter on extension cords. And, uh, we also have an issue with people driving off the main driveway and, uh, parking in the park, which creates issues for the trees if enough traffic, uh, rides, drive over the roots, be damaged trees. So we want to keep traffic and the people separated during special events. And that's been kind of a long-term thing that we've been looking at, so I threw it into the mix since we're already about the city park. Uh, there's a match for us if we were successful with the grant at twenty-five percent, so it'd be something that we'd have been budgeing for.
How will this affect downtown? Would it be a chip sidewalk or something like that?
No, no, this is just, uh, using existing conduits where, unless we find that the conduits are, uh, not good, but right now we believe we can use existing conduits. So we're just removing the old electric cabling and replacing it, it's just rewiring, just rewiring.
Do you need to about adding, running conduit, that light pole to that tree over here out, out front, instead of running extension cords?
That's part of this, but that's part of an old city, you know? Um, start doing things that was never designed and, yeah. And that's something you should probably work on. Our generator failed for this building and so we're getting votes on that and that'll be perfect. Uh, there's no end to just maintenance and replacement by project.
Any other comments or questions?
Nope.
And this would probably be expected construction next year, if you, you know, last time we had a downtown grant, I think it was two or three years before the state didn't have a budget and we took, uh, a while to get that, so. All right, um, clerk Callarroll, please.
Connor?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
McMillan?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Mayor B. D.
Aye.
Item eleven is a motion to authorize the opening of a hundred fifty feet of the twenty-foot north-south alley located east of six thirteen Wisconsin Avenue. Get a motion and second.
Second.
Okay, Matt McMillan and then Dave Reed with the second. And any discussion?
Can I leave the carport open until all the counties put in?
I would say yes, that would be, I, that's any council there, but yeah. For, um, to authorize opening, when we vacate an alley, we send a letter of two hundred fifty feet, should we, was this, for, was that done here or should we do that?
We, we did have.
Okay. It doesn't, it's just a nice courtesy, kind of a.
We don't move closer now, we choose when we.
But this, this has ever been closed, it's a, it's an active alley that isn't used.
Okay, that's just nice.
Somebody wants to use, so we're doing this, going in, grab one, not accommodate.
Okay. I thought, I thought this had been vacated and we were just taking.
No, 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 it's, it's open, it's off, it's, yeah, it's open, it's just not.
Technically open, it's on the rest.
It's just, it's just grass, yeah, it's not an actual.
Probably would be the worst if you could send a letter out.
Before we, before we open it, just send, if we could send a letter, this is a search what we'd like to do. But I think we can, or here's what we're going to do, that would be appropriate. All right, any other discussions or questions?
So, if we approve. Did you have something to say now? Did you have something to say?
Well, I just want to know how long would that, to open that up, how long that process.
How long is it gonna take by doing, by notifying nobody yet and doing this more? We've already delayed it three months.
I mean, I just think if I was living on that block and they were gonna close, or they were gonna open something that I've been using for, let's say, ten, fifteen years, I'd want to be notified. And I'm, I'm, I'm here for my brother, but I'm also here as, as, you know, a neighbor of somebody, that somebody in my neighborhood wanted to close an alley that I had been using for fifteen years, I'd want to know.
Right, when, when, if somebody wants to vacate, we do notify.
Yeah, and I just think if it's done for. Right, if it's done for one, it should be done for the other, I think. Well, they've already been using the alley. No.
No, the alley's not in use, it's all grass, it becomes like it's their own yard.
There's.
It's never been vacated, so it's still eligible to be used as an alley, somebody wanted, wanted to just drive down and park something in their backyard, they can drive down there, there's nothing they can do about it, they can't say, hey, you're on my yard or anything.
They have a solid base under it at this point still.
I think you should be good, hats up to say, hey.
I think it's just a good courtesy, just to say.
The council authorized the opening of the alley where we're gonna grab one or whatever and, you know, just get them heads up, they can come and tell us, I feel like they can come and ask, no, but.
Well, they said, this is done.
But public works will need to put it in their work plan.
How long is it?
How long is that alley?
Twenty feet.
Oh.
No, how long is it?
Thirty fifty.
Yeah, how long of area are we?
It's a good, all length of half a block.
Hundred and fifty.
Two houses.
Two left.
Just two houses. And it'd be, what's an alley, ten, fifteen feet wide, ten foot wide?
Twelve, usually.
So you're looking at maybe a hundred, hundred twenty-five feet by ten.
I don't think you need to delay action tonight.
I think we can go ahead, we just want to.
We're not delaying the project.
To let them know that it's coming, yes, but you don't need to delay action tonight, no.
Yeah, maybe we mail stuff out early, but before it gets started anyways.
I mean, Jeff's not planning on going tomorrow to do this, I'm sure.
No.
Okay, so we'll, we'll, um, just call, clerk, clerk Callarroll, please.
Connor?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
McMillan?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Mayor B. D.
Aye.
Okay, item twelve, mayoral appointments, get a motion and second to approve.
A second, I guess.
Okay, Matt McMillan and Dave Reed with the second. Any discussion? Um, clerk Callarroll, please.
Connor?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
McMillan?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Mayor B. D.
Aye.
Item thirteen, consent agenda, get a motion and second to approve the consent agenda with fund warrant totals of eight hundred seventy thousand, six hundred eighty-six dollars and thirty-seven cents.
Submove. Second.
Okay, Tim Gary with the motion and Matt McMillan with the second. Any discussion? Clerk Callarroll, please.
Connor?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
McMillan?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Mayor B. D.
Aye.
Item fourteen, we'll go into discussion items. So fourteen is parking on the one hundred, two hundred block of the north side of Morel across from St. Peter High School.
I brought this up, uh, I have some friends that stuff it up on Morel Street, trying to park, park from their houses. When schools are session, employees at the school park on the north side of Morel all day long, if they happen to have a parking place out front, they go to the store, come back, somebody's already backed in their spot, so now they have to either park around the back or park on the street area, they can go drop a car around the corner and stuff. The high school has a great big parking lot on Puffalaken Avenue, that's not full, so there's nobody's letting employees get parked either there, park on the side streets of Madison or, uh, what's the other, Jefferson. I'd like to see no parking from seven AM, or two-hour parking from seven AM to three PM, Monday through Friday.
And how do you enforce that? I'm not against it, I'm just asking the question, how would you?